Well, the clock looks like it's 5:03, but it's actually just about five. But we'll start early because we've got a variety of things to talk about tonight. So I invite you to join us with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and to the Republic of America, stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Gary?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Here. Well, a couple of things happened while we were gone. Connor Dalbig, if you want to stand up as an intern, a junior student at Davies', and he's coming by to see how well government works, so I hope the commissioners do well tonight. And the other thing is Shelley took a trip to Hawaii, and we're so pleased that she got married, so we want to congratulate her. And that's why you might notice she has a little more color than the rest of us. Health. On February 22nd, the Fargo Cast Public Health Environment Health Division hosted two bedbug seminars in an effort to provide community education and awareness of the topic. The seminars were facilitated by a licensed pest control exterminator, and 86 people attended. The Fargo Cast Public Health also hosted two workshops in February as part of the Back to Work Mom program to support breastfeeding and working moms in our community. The workshops will be held in each of the next three months. Library is back at it again. Events at the library in the next couple of weeks include Reading the World Book Club on Thursday, Seuss-tastic Day on Saturday, and events that celebrates Dr. Seuss's birthday, a house plant workshop in March 6th, and a culture program featuring the country of Haiti on March 11th. Planning. The U-32 apartment developers will start the construction on a second apartment building this summer on 32nd Avenue North. The building is second of four proposed on a 12-acre site. The five-story, 116-unit student housing apartment will have underground parking and surface parking as well. The first one built is doing very well and has a lot of students go to the university that are staying there. The Art Place America featured the Fargo Project in its recent article as a case study of how arts and culture can accelerate environmental progress. The Fargo Project is collaboration between the city and local artists to make stormwater detention basements more functional from a social and aesthetic perspective, integrating stormwater management with living community spaces that celebrate water as an essential part of Fargo's identity and culture. Nicole Crutchfield loves this project, so you could ask her any questions about it. Police. Regarding the recent school shooting in Florida, and in response to the school resource officer there, the chief said it is everybody's hope that the police officers all go home safe at the end of the day, but it is the Fargo Police Department's number-one priority each day to protect and serve the community. He said being a police officer is an honorable and noble profession, and they all have to be courageous in order to protect people and save lives, especially in an active shooter situation. He said the Fargo School Resource Officers understand the importance of their roles and look at the students in their schools as their children, and will not hesitate to face evil head-on in order to protect them. I think that's pretty strong words, and I think, Chief, we should applaud your department The community does have police officers in all our schools, and their role is exactly that, is to protect the children. The other exciting thing is, is that the VFW has had a derby every year, and Chief Mattern has won it six years in a row. So the mayor's challenge was, is that we could see if we could make it into the championship. So the Naughty Woods team made me a little car, and Mattern loves icon Fargo, so we made it Fargo, just exactly because he always is bad because we have that theater. And we won it this year, so Fargo rocks. So move on to normal business. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda moving items nine and 29 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Gering and Grinberg. Any discussion? If in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 18th, 2017 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would have to say that's February 12th, right?
Meeting?
When was it?
Yeah.
Yep, she had a different date here.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ball, say nay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, item 1 through 33 excluding items nine and 29, that have been moved to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. I think we have Ken Costin up for the State Water Commission's cost reimbursement. Steve Sprague? Do you have items A and B?
Kent is actually taking some well-deserved time off, and he didn't give me anything to bring up here, so I think this is the standard agreements that we have had in the past, and we're looking to get a reimbursement from the state for these costs. And I'm not even sure which is A and which is B, so.
You know?
Yeah.
I'll move to approve A. A is the Fargo issues, I believe, and so I'll move to approve A.
Second.
That is correct. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
I'll move 34B.
Is there a second? Any discussion? And that is a lot of the Ockbo cost on the levees and houses as well. Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. So 36, is that where you see us next? So on 36, consider City Attorney's Office to amend section 251509-1 of the Fargo Municipal Code to allow alcoholic consumption in the public at select downtown community development events. It has Steve Sprague to explain this as well. It's your lucky night, but I think we have some people from downtown to talk about it as well.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk to you about allowing alcohol consumption in a public place at selected DCP events. Currently, our ordinances do not allow consumption in public, and so it presents a problem if we have events where we want to have, like Beer Gardens and different things like that. The way that we do that is through our Class E permits, which allow a licensee to take their alcohol license off their license premise. We do have one section of the ordinance that is carved out that does allow alcohol consumption in public, and that's for the tailgating events up at NDSU. And so Melissa Rotemacher from the Downtown Community Partnership has taken over recently and is looking at ways to engage our downtown area at certain events and under certain circumstances. And so I think at this time, I'll just turn it over to Melissa for her comments.
Good evening. So in the packet that I provided for you shows some research that we have done in partnership with Steve Sprague. And as he noted, currently, the ordinance states that consumption of alcohol in a public place without a liquor license is prohibited. And what we would like to request is the ordinance to be amended to allow consumption in public at designated DCP events. Designated. We would want to work with our partners in terms of the police, health, and other businesses and retailers during these select events. And in your packet, we've created a proposed checklist on what we would want to do and implement in place of every single event to make sure that we have everything noted and covered. Also, speaking to local restaurants and retailers, we feel like this will benefit traffic and increase sales by bringing people off the streets into their businesses in conjunction with, for instance, Cork and Canvas that we currently have. Right now, we have about 30 retailers that participate in this event that the DCP offers, and currently, they go in, grab a little shot glass of wine, and take off and go to the next retailer, not creating an experience that we want. And it creates actually overconsumed adults. So what we're hoping to do is create an experience, go in, enjoy your glass of wine, and instead of slamming it in that retailer, allowing to mingle during a select event to each retailer that's participating or a restaurant. We are not proposing to have a liquor license as a DCP. We do not want to sell liquor. We want to partner with existing restaurants to provide that alcohol beverage for people to experience during select events.
Some people might ask, Melissa, street fair is the obvious thing that comes up. Are you also thinking of doing it for the street fair at some time?
Yes, we'd like to test this this July in street fair, and we are working on a route currently with the city, and we'd like to test this during that event. And in speaking to businesses up and down Broadway, they're open to trying this, and most street fair for restaurant and retailers, they like to close their door and leave town because they're feeling that they are not benefiting from the traffic that we are driving into street fair. So we're hoping that we can partner with these existing businesses and retailers to sustain them and drive their business and retain them for a vibrant downtown.
Questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
So I'm in favor of this, but what I would like to do is have us use the model. Sioux Falls has done this and some other cities. So instead of us just approving it, I would like to see what it looks like. So I'd like to have it go back through Liquor Control or something along that line, because I think the police chief, I mean, he has concerns about public safety, and so we support it, and the Liquor Control Board, we supported it, but I just think, instead of just saying to instruct the attorney to make sure, give them permission, I'd like to see the plan first, because I think that's, and I don't know, Steve, if you want to add anything to that, but that's my concern, because this is a huge change, and if it's not done well, it would be, it could be very bad. The tailgating at NDSU, there's a lot of security, you have the Dome staff going with the police, and so I want to see all that, and I think we all should, to make sure there's a plan ahead of time. So I guess, and I don't mean to make it sound like I'm not in favor of it, Melissa, but I just think we need to see what it looks like, what the plan is before we approve it. That's more.
So I want it to be fair to have the attorney look at that, then bring it to the Alcohol Committee.
Yeah, to Liquor Control.
Liquor Control.
I think that's, I don't know if that's what you had in mind, but I just think that's, I would like to see what other cities have done. Okay, thank you.
So in your packet, it notes the cities that I've actually researched as well spoke to. I have a pretty good relationship with Joe, who's the DC pre-president down in Sioux Falls, and the reason why they have seen success with their events and alcohol, they allow people to walk the streets, but the difference is that their liquor law allows them to have a liquor license. So that DCP in Sioux Falls has an actual liquor license and is their main revenue stream. So, and out of all the years that Joe's been down in Sioux Falls, they've had one incident over the six or seven years that he's been there that has been tied to that.
Commissioner Grinberg.
Just to add to that, wouldn't we have to have a first and second reading?
Yeah.
Does this actually come back?
Yeah.
So it's not, I mean, it's not a request. It has to happen that way.
Yep.
So we're going to see it again before we vote on it, right?
Correct. Yes, you will. But I think what I took Commissioner Pepcorn to be suggesting is we'll put a concept together probably and present it to the Liquor Control Board and kind of move through that channel to develop something.
Eric's exactly right. What we're looking for at this point is support from the commission to move down this path. We would be looking for maybe a motion to direct the city attorney to work on amending the ordinances to allow this. We've seen in other cases where staff come up with an idea, bring it to the city commission without having vetted it first, and find out that that's not the path that the city commission wants to go. And so at this point, we're just looking to see if there's general support. Obviously, we have to work out the details yet.
Commissioner Gurek?
Yeah, so I'll make that motion, and I'll make a comment. I move to direct the city attorneys to draft the ordinance to allow select events with the DCP downtown to have liquor in public, and bring that back to the Liquor Control Board and to the city commission.
There's a second?
I'll second it. For further discussion, could I add one thing? Melissa also talked about this, the liquor license of the city not being able, or the Downtown Community Partnership, by not allowing to hold a liquor license, that is an issue because with the Fargo Dome, the Red Hawk Stadium, these things, there is something there that we might have to work on, especially down the road, and so that's just, it's just something that you brought up that is ironic, because it is an issue in other areas too. So that's just something to look at.
Mr. Strand, you're the only one that hasn't talked.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I support this concept, but frankly, I'd go further, but I'm okay starting here. In my mind, when I travel to New Orleans or to Puerto Vallarta or other places, and the notion of being able to grab a glass of wine and walk out in the street and have a band, and, you know, but this is a great start. We can see how it works, we can see how the community reacts, we can see if other people want to roll other events, and I hope they do, into the DCP's umbrella, so we can have more umbrellas, but it's a good start.
Commissioner Gurek?
I think building on John's point is, if and when this is successful, I want the Commissioners to be prepared for people outside of downtown to ask for the same leeway. So if it is successful here, which I believe it will be, you know, places in South Fargo or North Fargo, whatever, might say that they want an event with similar parameters, and I think it's only just and fair that we'd allow that to happen. So like you said, a good first step, and I'm sure it'll be great, and then we can move forward from there.
Well, we know West Fargo has a cruise night out in West Fargo that's been successful as well. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. We go to public hearings. Transfer of Class A B alcoholic beverage license from Mom's Kitchen, doing business as Tailgater's Sports Cafe on 1322 Main Avenue, to Demenski Enterprises, doing business as Tailgater's Mom's Kitchen, was continued from 12918 and from 21218 regular meetings. Steve Sprague, again, is at the podium.
Amazing, right?
Yes.
So tonight, we have the transfer of the Mom's Kitchen Tailgater's license. It was through Liquor Control over a month ago, and they had some details to work out before they went to the public hearing here. So my understanding is that everything, their details of the sale and the transfer have all been agreed to now, and so they're ready to move forward with this.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this license change? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearings. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. A continuance, continue to 32618, transfer of a Class A alcoholic beverage license from Classic Foods, doing business as Ground Round Restaurant, to FSB Associates, doing business as Saloon on 506 Broadway North. They want to continue that until March 26th. Do I have a motion?
Moved. I'll second.
Grinberg and then Pepcorn. Any discussion?
Yeah. I think it bears, you know, that we should tell people why this is. Maybe you can explain the thought process that happened at Liquor Control.
Sure. So this application came to Liquor Control, and actually, I think Liquor Control kind of felt like there wasn't enough information, and so we wanted to have further discussion regarding that, get some further information. There was also some concern about the location of this license. The application is saying that it would move into a North Broadway location, and so there was concern from the chief's side and others that we have an oversaturation potentially of licenses downtown. I actually met with the applicant today and was able to discover quite a bit of information that wasn't presented to Liquor Control. So I'm hopeful that when it comes back to Liquor Control, it'll make more sense. One of the things that I found out is that what he's doing is bringing in a franchise, and so it's more of a bar grill kind of thing, more, there's a lot more food service than I think we were initially thinking, so.
Mr. Chairman, just to go into a little bit, the thing that concerns us is there's already two Class A bars within 100 yards, and this one would be right between them. So we would have three Class A licenses within 100 yards, and so that's, it's moving from the Ground Round on 13th Avenue, and so some of the businesses, some of the neighbors were very concerned about this, and I am too. And Arlette Preston, a former commissioner, gave us some information about, you have to be careful, the location of these, and our downtown and Broadway is, that's our jewel, and so to be very careful that we don't turn it into a row of bars, because we've had that in the past. And so that was one of the main reasons that we were in favor of this delay as well, because I think we have to be very careful. Downtown is great, and Broadway is booming, and that's where everybody wants to be, but the main thing, Steve, you talked about food service, that's good, but at the end of the day, it's still an A license. And so that's the thing that concerns me. If it's a different license, then I guess we would be willing to look at it, but that's one of the concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner Gurek?
Yeah, so this is a four-to-one. I dissented. I think now we're not only limiting types of licenses and how many there are for the types, but now we're trying to get into limiting where they go, and I think we're going the wrong direction. If downtown has concerns, and I'm not saying that they're not valid concerns, then we can limit downtown bars. But we shouldn't be limiting the number of A licenses or Z licenses or other licenses for the entire city of Fargo, and then say that we're doing that because downtown has too many bars. South Fargo does not have too many bars. North Fargo does not have too many bars. Downtown might have too many bars. Let's let the people in downtown decide what number they want, and then we can have a better way forward, a more congruent way forward. There's also different ways to limit bars. We can limit by square footage. You can have a bar the size of the hub or a bar the size of JL Beers, and you can get an A license and operate in the exact same way. So we can limit by how many seats are in there or how many square foot there are, and it's a much smarter way to go. So because of that, and because of the new licenses being popped up and all the discussion we've had and the changes that we've had, I'll bring to Liquor Control the idea that we should hire a consultant to come from the outside, look at our laws, get spun up on how we've been doing things, and then move from there. And I think that hopefully someone from the outside can give us a better way forward, a more congruent way forward for people who in the future will be applying, because in this case, we have a willing buyer, a willing seller, and we're stopping that transaction going on because some people believe downtown has too many bars, and I think that's a dangerous thing to do.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one more thing? The key thing is, this is all within 100 yards, three bars, and part, that is our job, and this is a legitimate public safety thing. So this isn't, I'm all for small business and for free trade and all that, but bars in the downtown and three of them within 100 yards, that is a recipe for issues. And it's already, one of the bars is already one of our highest visited by the police department, and so I think we need to be very careful. Ordinarily, government should not be involved in business, but this is one of those cases where I do think we have to be very careful. We've, many people have spent a lot of effort to rejuvenate downtown and Broadway, and I think we have to be very careful. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Well, I think one of the things you have to do is the logistics of the law as well, so Commissioner Guring's comment may be good, is get a consultant. If you look at Vinyl Taco, JL Beers, and Donaldson's are all, Hodo is right next to each other, that's within 100 yards, and it's just maybe that that works for us, but it would probably have to be discussion. To your other point, Dave, is that that one bar has most of our calls, that could be close to where the new bar would be. So it might be a good opportunity to discuss that at some point between the Liquor Control or come up with some ideas, because two items I think you're talking about is, are we limiting business or are we doing morality? Which ones are we supposed to do? Are we not supposed to have as many bars downtown, because it does change some different dynamics? Or millennials want something different? So it's going to be an interesting discussion. I hope you guys come up with some answers for us. So we need to continue this? Is that okay? Any other discussion?
We have a motion and a second.
Yep.
To continue.
To continue, yes. Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Number C, application by Cashwise Liquor, Cashwise Liquor for a Class B limited alcoholic beverage license for 4985 Timberline Parkway South. Steve Sprague to explain.
This is the last item that I will be up here for. This is for a new issue of a Class B limited. It's an off-sale license, and it's to be located down in the 52nd Avenue corridor along with the new construction of the grocery store and gas station. So they're meeting all of the requirements in their footprint, that they're not violating the 100-foot rule or anything like that, so.
So when they got licensed before, they were a different location, and that was controversy because there was a liquor store next to them.
Correct.
Now in this application, they have none of those constraints?
They have none of those constraints. This is the last of the B-limited licenses that we have available. I think the other one was issued not too long ago to Hornbuckers, so.
Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this application? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearings. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in a second, Guring and Grinberg. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Eric?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item D, Rockin' Horse Farm Fifth Edition, 5801, 52nd Avenue South. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 1418. Zoning change from AG Alculture to single-dwelling residential and public and institutional. It's a first reading of the rezoning ordinance, and it's a plot of the Rockin' Farm Fifth Edition. Donald Kress to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress from the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting this item as item 35F. Gentlemen, as you are passing down the documents down the line there, this was a late edition document that we'll talk about in a moment here as we go through our presentation. The proposal here is for the Rockin' Horse Farm Fifth Edition. Location there, west of Veterans Boulevard and north of 52nd Avenue South. This is a residential and park development. As you see here, the residential lots are shaded in blue, and the non-residential lots are green. Lot 13 down here is going to be transferred to Fargo Park District. There's a connection off the street here. There will be a detention base in here, and this will be another Fargo Park. Lot 1 here is an, will be owned by the Homeowners Association, or HOA. We'll talk about that in a little more detail in a moment. And this lot 25, if you've been out here, gentlemen, you'll see that there is the sign for the Rockin' Horse Farm out there, and this lot here, ending right there, will also be owned by the HOA. Again, the zoning here is requested, it's currently agricultural. The residential lots would be proposed to be zoned SR3, which is a single-dwelling residential zone, and the park and HOA lots zoned PI Public and Institutional, which is the appropriate zoning for lots of this type. This plot will create 48 lots in three blocks, again, the three open lots there, as well as 45 single-family lots. These lots range in area between about 6,000 and 8,000 square feet. All of them meet the minimum lot area requirement of the SR3 zone, which is 5,000 square feet. The PI zoned lots range from 13,000 to about 245,000 square feet. That'd be the lot 3 there. Regarding those HOA lots, you know, Commissioners, we're always concerned about, we, in the planning business, call orphan lots, that is, lots that an HOA might own, and then the HOA falls apart, and then who really owns them? So this, for this plot, we've done something a little different, and this is the document that was just passed out to you. These are some CCNRs, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which would ordinarily be created for the subdivision by the developer, but we've requested the developer to insert some language in there that gives some clear guidance as to how these lots will be maintained by the association, taxes paid, maintenance performed, and if such a situation that the HOA would no longer be effective, how the city would be able to deal with those lots. These are spelled out in section 3.2, beginning on page 4, called Common Area Lots. This is something we've worked internally and then with the developer represented here by Mr. Love from Houston Engineering and our city attorney, Eric Johnson. So we've gone through these and worked out this language, and so we would, when we get to the motion, we would ask you to include in the motion the amendment to authorize the city to sign these. We're signing it as a consent party. Mr. Johnson, do you need to talk about that at all?
Certainly, yes. So basically, it's not as though the city is taking on any obligations here. The sole purpose for your approval of this is to allow the mayor and city auditor to sign the document, and essentially, again, it empowers the city, should somebody not take care of the lawn, not pay the taxes on these sort of, these homeowner association lots, the city could sort of step into the shoes of the homeowners association and sort of enforce a levy of an assessment to pay for those things. The city's called a consent party because, in part, because that, those provisions can't be modified without the consent of the city. So we want the city to remain empowered and the property owners granting the city that
lot twenty-five up here. Again, the park district will take care of this lot. And, uh, some small streets in here. We'll get to the recommendation. Uh, there are no TIFs or other incentives associated with this project. Planning staff has received no public comment on this project. The applicant, Mike Love of Houston Engineering, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. Planning Commission's recommendation for approval is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. And Commissioners, again, if we may ask you to include, uh, the, uh, the additional part of authorizing the city, the city to sign the, uh, CCNRs. Is that the correct wording there, Mr. Johnson?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this?
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, Mike Love, Houston Engineering, representing the developer. I have nothing to add, but welcome. Uh, happy to answer any questions.
Questioners, any questions? Mr. Grinberg?
We're gonna have sidewalks, right?
Yes, we're gonna have sidewalks.
And a ten-foot bike trail.
Very good. Yeah, Eric, it's kind of unique that we would get involved in a contract between people, right? I mean, there's, there are other associations around Fargo where we don't interject ourselves and enforce their contracts.
Right. Uh, it, it's not common. It's not, uh, it's not without precedent. We, uh, one example in the past, we've done it with the Spire Edition. Where, where it comes about, frankly, is again, where there's a, a park land lot or maybe a, um, stormwater pond that's gonna be its own separate parcel. And the problem with that is it doesn't really have any value other than, uh, as a park, there isn't a natural person that's gonna pay the taxes automatically. And so the HOA then typically says, we'll all share in the cost of that. And the city's only interest is that somehow that the city doesn't, so to speak, inherit it by the not, by the forfeiture for non-payment of taxes. We've had that experience in the past in the Parkview South Edition years ago. And so this has been kind of an ongoing issue. Uh, this particular solution, we've started exploring within the past three or four years and we're starting to, to see the need for it. We won't need to do that in other circumstances where there's not sort of this separate parcel that, you know, has its own identity and the only thing on, you know, where, where the pond is not attached to something else that has value. There, the taxes will get paid. We know who to charge if we have to shovel the sidewalk or mow a lawn for them. But so it's a little bit of a unique, somewhat unique situation or rare situation where you have a potential orphan lot.
Why wouldn't the park board be the one signing that for the park there?
Yeah, it's not going to be a park district-owned park. It's, you know, it's a, a meadow area for their own, uh, purposes, but not necessarily a park district lot.
I mean, I just get a little bit uneasy when we interject ourselves into contracts in between individuals because we can get caught up in messes that way. We actually own land in Prairie Rose or we own something with the fence there and they wanted to change the fence and we got asked to have a vote in that. And that was a messy situation where we just didn't do anything, which gave one side the advantage over the other side. So there is precedence to say that I don't wanna get involved in neighborhood TIFs.
Right.
Not, not the TIF as an incentive either.
No, and, and we're not gonna own any of these parcels. So we will, I, I know what, what situation you're talking about. There we happened to, because of flood acquisitions, we own the land and now all of a sudden we get a vote and we'd prefer not to have a vote. Uh, this isn't that situation. This isn't, we won't be owning this. This, this, you know, uh, I don't anticipate any situation where the city's gonna get in mess in that.
He's against TIF, so maybe a different neighborhood dispute.
I, I just wanna throw it out there that I'm glad this is not gonna be a standard procedure for us to do this in the future. It's a, it's a different scenario and I'll support it here, but if I, if I see it happening more, I'm probably not gonna support those in the future.
Yeah, and just to be clear, to the extent you have developers that want to organize their lots in this way, this is a solution that staff thinks is a viable solution. There may be others. This seems to be the best one that we've come up with. Uh, and we can talk, take it, we can talk about it in more depth at any time if you wish.
Can you comment to the philosophy of this development? Cause you guys have had some real push to have green space. Uh, you have some different entities that are in that community that make it a neighborhood. And it appears to be that this is one of those things as well.
Yeah, if, I've presented on this multiple times, but, uh, because of the unique nature of the circle that was existing that we're trying to develop around, you end up with the issue of double-fronting lots. So lot one, the main purpose of lot one is to buffer the rear yards from a street so you don't have double-fronting lots. So it ends up being this kind of random green space. We, we decided to turn it into an HOA lot and this will become another one of those pocket parks like we discussed during the sidewalk discussion around the rest of it. So it'll be developed into, I'm not sure what he has planned for this, but it'll be developed into some sort of learning-oriented pocket park. The other lot, lot twenty-five, that was purely just for the development sign. And just to clarify, lot thirteen will get deeded to the park district. So they will own that lot. And that's the lot that the pond is located on. So they will actually own the pond lot. So.
And then, uh, just as a idea going forward, now do you anticipate all the homes will put a fence behind them?
Uh, knowing Mr. Promisberger and how he doesn't like fences, I don't believe there'll be fences back there. So.
It's just Timberline. I noticed somebody put a fence all the way around everything now. It makes you look totally different.
So the, the, the covenants, the CCNR that is in front of you, we drafted as just a very basic starting point. Um, so not everything is in that. Uh, we had to have the document developed so we could insert the city's language in there. So it'll be amended as we go forward. So it'll come back to you, obviously for approval since you're, uh, signing a, uh, the consentee. Um, so it's likely that, uh, some of those things will get added. Like, I'm sure there'll be some design control over the house, the way the houses look and fences and things like that. So, but as you, as you're on the CCNR, it will come back before you to review. So.
Is anybody else who wishes to speak to this? Don Gress, you wanna speak again? You've had your time.
If I may just address that Commissioner Gary's comment. Um, Commissioner, this, uh, this problem of orphan lots is something faced by many jurisdictions. And, uh, several jurisdictions, and in fact, I used to work in Williston, as you may know, and we developed language, uh, very similar to that. In fact, um, some of that Williston language appears in this slightly modified version, uh, to deal with these lots that, again, as you say, we don't wanna own them, but then we don't wanna end up being responsible for them if they default back to us for taxes. So, uh, this is a new thing here for us, as I understand it. But it's a common problem in, in other jurisdictions. I used to work in California. It's the same problem out there. They have similar inserted into the CCNRs. So it's not an untypical practice there. Just so for background.
Makes me uneasy.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Very good. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Close public hearing. Grinberg says aye. Who's, who's a second?
I'll second it.
Pepcorn? Any further discussion? Mr. Strand?
Just a question and, and Commissioner Grinberg alluded to it, but explain what the sidewalks will be. Cause I know we discussed sidewalks in the circle and I don't wanna be surprised later.
Yeah, I mean, oh, please.
Okay, the, the, there's a, there's an existing sidewalk that runs along the outside of the circle already. Um, and there are, there is a sidewalk that runs along the south side of forty-eighth. So those are already existing. The, the, all of the local streets will have four and a half foot sidewalks on either side of it. There'll be a ten-foot, uh, path that comes into the park and then there'll be trail system in the park. There'll be another ten-foot path that runs along the south side of the park, connects to the existing sidewalk that's on Veterans Boulevard, which is currently five feet. I believe we will expand that to ten-foot. So there'll be an extensive ten-foot trail system through the park space that'll then connect up to existing trail networks. And then the inter, the exist, uh, the new development will have its own four and a half foot sidewalk. So it'll all be a connected system.
Thank you.
So John, on the rocking horse circle, that was the discussion we had one time about sidewalks.
Which we waived. We, we didn't require it.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item E, developer agreements, uh, related to tax agreement findings, District two-oh-one-oh-one, Interstate Business Park. Explanation by Jim Gilmore.
Thank you. Um, the infrastructure that we're gonna be working on getting installed, uh, is to serve the Border States Electric headquarters. It's under construction. Um, there's three developer agreements tied to this. Uh, one for Border States Electric, one for Matrix Properties and one for Shields. Um, the, uh, mate, we're in a situation where Matrix and Shields, uh, really don't need the infrastructure today. They don't have immediate plans for development, but, uh, Border States does. And so, uh, we've had to work out, uh, agreements with all three in order to get the roads, um, through there because these roads are adjacent to all three properties. The, uh, renewal plan that's tied to these development agreements was adopted by the Fargo City Commission in two thousand and one. Um, at that time, we were looking at a way to get more infrastructure into this area. There were, there were power lines that needed to be relocated, uh, because you're up against two interstates. It was difficult to, uh, to provide access into the area because of those, uh, limited access highways. And so that development plan, uh, included providing money for Forty-Second Street, Parkway's and other public facilities. And those types of activities are consistent with what's in these, uh, development agreements. There are three different agreements and, um, there are probably five main, uh, points or things that are covered by these agreements. Uh, first of all, a portion of the park, the Parkway, which is the, the extension of Twenty-third Avenue as you come to the, kind of zoo intersection by Twenty-third and Forty-Second Street, uh, that would be continued, uh, to the east and connect with, um, uh, Thirty-first Street that then, uh, down to connect with Twenty-sixth Avenue, really to, uh, complete that, that loop. Um, with this agreement, those special assessments will be capped at about two-hundred-and-eight dollars a front foot. Uh, that's similar to the policy, uh, for residential areas for when we're doing arterial streets. Uh, when those are capped, we, often we use sales tax funds to, to cap those special assessments. Uh, secondly, there'll be provisions for regional stormwater facility, uh, that will serve both the Border States property as well as the Matrix property. Third, TIF funds would be used for the construction of a traffic light at Twenty-third Avenue and Forty-Second Street. Um, I think that's warranted now, given the amount of traffic out in that area. Uh, fourth, there would be deferrals to both, for both Shields and Matrix for up to ten years or whenever they actually plat the property. So it may not run ten years, but, uh, that way they don't have to start paying special assessments right away when they're not in fact, uh, developing their land. Um, the, uh, again, those deferrals are kind of typical, uh, when you have a developer wants to develop on one side of the street, but, uh, not on the other side of the street. I should note that the, the water and sanitary sewer will be a special assess, but we will not be using any TIF funds for that. Uh, the developers would, uh, pay for those types of, uh, you know, infrastructure as they would, uh, in other areas of the community. The, um, so these, uh, agreements are on for your consideration. Uh, one of the factors is the state says you should consider is whether or not this creates some sort of unfair competition with other developers. So the recommended motion is to pre, approve all three developer agreements. They're really kind of intertwined. One doesn't work without the other. They really, uh, it's sort of an all or nothing. They either all work together or they, they don't. Uh, I know there's a representative here from Border States Electric. Uh, I don't know if they wanna make any comments or if you have any questions. I'm not sure if anyone is from here from Shields or not. I didn't recognize anyone. Any questions for me?
Who wishes to speak?
Open the hearing.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I, I agree with what, uh, what Jim was, was, was saying and, and I, I answer questions, but we are definitely in progress on our facility. You can drive by and see it's a, it's quite a, quite a, quite an experience going through this process, but, uh, we'd like to have some roads. Uh, there's a, there's, there's a very limited access.
Do you wanna pass out your plans? Cause they can see all the windows.
Thank you.
How iconic it is.
Mr. Chairman, while he's doing that, can I just make a quick comment or two?
Yep.
So, uh, the thing that was the challenge and, and was the best thing to do was to do all these at one time. Uh, because then it gives you a lot more flexibility as far as, uh, where to put the drain. Uh, if we would have developed all these separately, it would have been a mu, much more challenging. And so even though Border States is at a different stage in their construction, to, to have these all three done together and it was Bruce and Jim, it was a lot of moving parts. But to do it, that whole big section together gives you a lot more flexibility as far as moving things around. So I wanna thank them for, it was, uh, it was, it was a lot of hard work. Cause, uh, basically the other developers don't wanna start paying until they are developing their land. And so Border States is at a different time than, than the rest. And so from the standpoint of the staff, thank you for your hard work. It was challenging and, and I think that was, it was, it was the, the right thing to do. Thank you.
And the other thing, we don't wanna redo that road because we could have had a smaller road in now and then come back, put a bigger road in. So it has to have the three developers to agree. So we thank you for your hard work. Any other questions? Commissioner Gary?
My question's for Jim. Why a TIF instead of an assessment?
There's really a combination of both. There is special assessments, but, um, the TIF money is being used to cap the special assessments at a, at a lower rate in order to, because it is a difficult property to access, given the fact that you, you know, you don't have a way to, um, bring Twenty-sixth Avenue over the interstate. Uh, there isn't a natural set of arterials or collectors, uh, in that, through that area. And so the land use plan was adopted probably back in nineteen ninety-nine, called for this Parkway, uh, to go through that area. Uh, we later followed up with a TIF plan to help, uh, you know, to help pay for that Parkway.
Is there other instances where we've done TIFs like this instead of assessing like we would in normal cases?
Um, there's other cases where we have capped the special assessments using sales tax funds. Um, you know, the, there's a Goldmark Development on the corner of Twenty-Fifth and, um, um.
Eighteenth.
Uh, I, I ninety-four is another one where we had used some TIF funds for stormwater facilities and, uh, helped pay for, but those were more local streets.
Yeah. Any other questions? Anybody else from the public wanna speak? Would close the public hearing? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a great workout by everybody. Bruce, I wanna congratulate you on the hard work you did on this. And also Jim, because it did take a lot of meetings. Seemed to seem like this was on the calendar over and over and over again. So I'm glad we could finally get there. Border States Electric, we truly agree, uh, that you're a great partner for us. Uh, police chief is just floating over his new facility that he's getting into. Police cars are nice and warm. Our cops no longer have to shovel off snow. So I've asked the chief, maybe one of the guys could come over and brush my car off a little bit. It's been a real nice addition to us and we're very glad you're in your building. Cause we get into our building as quicker as you get into your building. So we very much.
Tammy Miller, the CEO of Border States. Commissioners, pleased to be here tonight. Uh, we are really excited about getting in this new facility. We talked about growth as we launched this plan a while back and today we have thirty-eight positions open in Fargo for the new facility. Uh, that's just the corporate headquarters and then we have five, uh, positions open in our Fargo branch. So working very hard to create more jobs in this great community. We appreciate.
And you're also attracting people from out of state, aren't you? Don't you bring some people from all over the country?
We are, yes. And then on Friday, we announced that we're opening two new branches in two new states in Washington and Idaho.
Congratulations.
And we'll support them out of Fargo.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. Grinberg?
I'm assuming that, you know, you're gonna move in in May? Because when I drive by there on Saturday and Sundays, there's men setting steel seven days a week. So you must have a great crew that's going to.
The plan is spring of next year, but we're hoping we will be done with the building at the end of December, right Phil?
I'm just being a little cynical, but you, you got a construction crew that works seven days a week.
Yeah, Mortensen is doing a great job for us. Thank you.
Good. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Number F, plat of the Interstate Business Park Edition, a replat of lot one, block one, Adams Seventh Edition and part of the northeast quarter of Section twenty-two, Township one thirty-nine North, range forty-nine west of the fifth principal meridian. And approval recommended by the Planning Commission on four-four-seventeen. Jim Gilmore, oh no, Don Crest coming back.
Back to me, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I always should know you're up there, Don, cause you always wear a sweater for us. So thank you.
Oh, yes, sir. Appreciate you noticing. Um, we'll, uh, we'll finish off that last project, gentlemen, with the Interstate Business Park subdivision, which, uh, has been going along with the development agreements that you just approved. Uh, this property is, uh, described as, as the mayor said, this is, uh, uh, I ninety-four up here, I twenty-nine over here and Forty-Second Street here. We're plating the area in the dark black there, which includes these lots and the right-of-way as depicted. This part here is actually not being platted at this time. Uh, this property is zoned general commercial. The zoning was approved by your commission in June twenty seventeen. The plat creates three lots for commercial development and includes dedications to right-of-way as depicted. It's a three-page plat here. The planning staff received one phone call inquiring about this project. There were no comments, just an inquiry some time ago, actually, as we've been working on this plat for some time, as the mayor has noted. I don't know if, I don't believe Mr. Schoss is with us tonight, the applicant. But again, fairly straightforward, just a big plat here. The applicant, the planning commission's recommendation for approval is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners. You just approved of the plat.
Just a question after the motion, the last time, if we disapproved this, would nothing go ahead?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Gilmore.
Oh, okay. Just a curiosity question.
No plat, no infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Is there any president who wishes to speak to this? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Grinberg says so moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pepcorn. Any discussion by the commissioner? Roll call vote, Shelley?
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Guess we get infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So we're going to go to the 2018 Community Development Action Plan. Nicole Crutchfield, I think you're going to explain that to us. You've been busy lately, a lot of meetings, huh?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The 2018 Community Development Action Plan is a step that you see every year as part of the HUD funds. The Community Development Committee this year put together a task force as part of that committee to determine through selection process how this money gets assigned through the different projects. This is part of a public hearing, and advertisement was made in 30-day public notice period. So this closes that public notice period. And unless you have any questions, I guess I would ask for that public hearing.
Is this the usual amount you get?
Yes, about. It's a formula grant out of the feds, so it's all allocated pre-ahead of time.
Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this plan? Is anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Commissioner Strand, do you want to say something?
Thank you. Nicole, I'm just curious, this is for 2018.
Yeah.
And it's established, could you help us understand that?
Sure. Yeah, the flow of, thank you very much. The flow of this process, basically, we start working, we receive applications, we start working on what projects we'll be doing for 2018. Once you, hopefully you approve this tonight, it gets filed at the federal level. That then releases the funds. Might not get the funds till fall, sometimes late fall, early summer, I mean, late summer, early fall. And the funds will actually go into 2019. And so right now, we're actually looking at yet an item on consenting agenda tonight, basically those final actions for 2015, 16, and 17 funds. So this is kind of a four- to five-year window of how funds come in and out of the city process.
Can you comment to the housing rehab on this? You have a budget of $465,000, but I'm under the impression, John, that you've got some banks that are helping doing some of the rehab, spending several millions in the community, or no?
Well, we're working with Gate City a lot, I believe.
Yeah, this is separate from the Gate City program. So this is just federal dollars that come to us for housing rehab, for special qualified assistance on the people that live in those houses have to meet certain qualifications to receive these.
For the public that don't see the report we have in front of us, don't we have several hundred, thousands in that?
Yes.
Close to a million or two million, is that?
Yes. When you add the bank dollars, and so there's the private dollars that come in as part of this as well.
So the neighborhood should know that the city of Fargo with the federal government also spends about $2 to $3 million on rehab of homes. And we have a lot of what, John, $20,000, $30,000 loans to fix up your house? Is that right?
I would guess so. And that's the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Strand, Grinberg. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Request a new subcommittee to revisit the results of feasibility study on the Fargo Performance Center. Bruce Grubb to explain this one.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. First, a little history lesson, if you'll just, it's been a while since we brought this forward last time. Matter of fact, two commissioners that haven't seen this yet. So anyway, back in September of 2014, it goes back a ways. The commission appointed a subcommittee to take a look at the Civic Center and the potential of repurposing it to a performance-type of venue. The talk of a performance venue in downtown Fargo is something that's been around, and I've been hearing about the entire 30 years of my career. But the reason for the commission directing the formation of that subcommittee at that time was the removal of Centennial Hall, which was connected to the Civic Center. That needed to be removed in order to make way for the construction of New City Hall. The subcommittee that was named at that time included two city commissioners, two city staff members, two members from the Fargo Dome Authority, one Civic Auditorium board member, and one local events promoter. So Commissioner Pepcorn chaired that subcommittee. And the first thing that we did was prepare an RFP for a feasibility study to look at the potential for repurposing the Civic Center to a performance hall-type of venue. We spent quite a bit of time centered around two basic questions. Number one, what would the purpose of the facility be? And then secondly, once that was determined, could the current Civic Center be renovated to meet the need, or if not, what would it take to complete new construction? So what we did is we advertised, took proposals, conducted interviews, ended up selecting the team of HVS Convention Sports and Entertainment Facilities Consulting. Teamed with them was a local architect, JLG Architects, and then a national firm called Schuler Shook, and their expertise is theater planning and lighting design. So the final feasibility study did get presented to the city commission on August 21st of 2015. It was received and filed at that time, and then we haven't taken any further action at this point pending the construction of New City Hall. New City Hall is expected to be completed the end of April, and we should be moved in. We'll get it fit up in about 30 days and get moved in in another 30 days. So what we wanted to do tonight was to give a brief follow-up presentation on the findings of the feasibility study. We think that would really be good information at this time. And so Todd Med with JLG Architects is here representing the feasibility consulting team. He's here to walk us through the presentation quickly. But before I turn it over to Todd, last year, we were having some drone video shot of 2nd Street, the relocation of 2nd Street, and flood protection work along there. At the same time, City Hall was under construction, we decided to fly some drone video footage of the City Hall project, as well as the Civic Center area, which we kind of anticipated we'd be talking about at this time. So Greg, if you're ready to roll that footage, I hope you find this kind of interesting, the bird's-eye view. This first view is the drone flying from 2nd Street in an easterly direction toward the river. You can see the Yum Com Center in the background, and so you kind of get a perspective there. It's going over the top of old City Hall that'll be removed. New City Hall construction on your left. And then as we progress, you'll see the work that's been done on 2nd Street, the permanent flood wall, and then some of the trail and landscaping work done on the riverside of the flood wall. Really kind of a nice view of that. Now, this is coming from a southerly direction along 3rd Street. That's the public library to your left, obviously. Old City Hall on your left, the Civic Center upper left, and then New City Hall on your right. This is just a different perspective from south to north. Then at the end of this, you get a little glimpse of the city center townhouse project north of City Hall as well, under construction. This view is from the north, from the city center lofts project headed south. Difficult to see, but New City Hall on your left, going right over the top of old City Hall, Public Library straight ahead. And then these are a couple of wraparound shots, just to kind of give you some perspective on the Civic Center, how it's located across from the Public Library and the New City Hall. It's kind of an interesting view from the riverside of the flood wall, really a nice picture even on the riverside of the flood wall. And so that's that. Hope you enjoyed it. We really kind of liked some of this drone video footage. I think it helps really give you an overall perspective. So with that, I'd like to ask Todd Med to come up briefly and walk us through the findings of our feasibility study, and then open it up for discussion after that. So Todd, if you would.
Great. Thank you, Bruce. Good evening, Commissioners. So as Bruce mentioned, well, he had all the fun. I get to do a PowerPoint presentation. He's flying drones around City Hall, so I'll try to make the most of what I've got here. But thanks for having me. We're excited this has bubbled back up to the surface. Obviously, we worked pretty closely with Bruce and his team, Commissioner Pepcorn, back in 2015, consulting with HVS out of Chicago, as well as Schuler Shook. And the presentation I'm going to show is really pretty much what we presented back in 2015 with very little changes to that. But we wanted to get you guys educated. As Bruce mentioned, there's a couple commissioners that were not here at that time. So those who were here have seen this. Those who weren't, this will be a little bit new, but I know you guys have seen some of this information to date. So a real quick summary of the findings. We went through an extensive community interview process, not only with individuals in the arts community, Convention and Visitors Bureau, stakeholders, the Fargo Dome, individuals, really to find out what the best opportunity for us as a city would be for a performance venue. Knowing that we've already got venues in the community, we didn't want to compete with anybody, but we also wanted to see where that missing link was in the whole process. As Bruce mentioned, the first piece was, what does that look like? The second piece is, where would that be? And if that is on the Civic Center site, is that repurposing the Civic Center, or is that a demolition and a rebuild? So I'm going to get into that a little bit later as we go through this, but we came to, as far as a project size, was about 116,000 square foot venue with a seating capacity of about 2,400 individuals, with a lot of opportunity for multipurpose use of the facility, but also flexibility going forward, knowing that we could not build a facility that was not dedicated to a specific purpose. The moment you start doing something that's kind of a Swiss Army knife of buildings, you lose the ability to really make it a truly great facility. So that's something that was always playing through this narrative. We also wanted to focus it on theatrical shows based on the data that we got from HVS, as well as some options for flat-floor venues. And as we go through the plans, I'm going to kind of show how that could be solved. And really bringing the people into the space. We didn't want this to be an 8:00 to 10:00 Friday, Saturday night type venue, but more of a 7:00 in the morning with Eggs and Issues being here, people renting it out for a board meeting for Gate City Bank, or Border States Electric, or whomever, but also having the evening events. And we came to an estimated total project cost of over $50 million, whether it was demolition and rebuild, or whether it was retrofit of the new, or of the existing Civic So we went through about a 14-week process with the team that Bruce had mentioned. JLG and HVS were interviewed and selected for the project. Throughout that project, the biggest focus at the front end was interviewing stakeholders, understanding really what the community wanted, and listening to what, and gaining that buy-in from those individuals. And then HVS is, they're the numbers, folks. They got into all the demand projections, looking at the area and the draw, the draw rate from certain radius. And then we kind of took over the piece of looking at preliminary building program with our consulting team. Then we presented back to the city commission and to our committee. After that, we went through more of a financial operations study, economic and fiscal impact study, as well as concept planning and cost estimating, really at a high level, but just to really give us the feeling and understanding that we'd looked at this from multiple angles. And then it came back to financing and an implementation plan, which became the basis of the document. I don't know if you guys have all seen the feasibility study, but that really is what was produced throughout that process. Bruce mentioned the individuals. I'm going to move through about it. This is about an hour presentation. I'm hoping to get through in about 10 or 15 minutes, so I'll be flying here. So feel free if you need to stop me, and I can back up and go through it. I can. Civic Center committee members, Commissioner Pepcorn and Commissioner Williams, Bruce Grubb, Bob Getz from the city, Rob Sobelik from the Fargo Dome, as well as Deb from the board, Dan from the Civic Center Board, and Jade Nielsen, a local events promoter. And then we identified potential users throughout that process, which is a pretty broad user group. And then a lot of stakeholder interviews throughout that process, individuals from the Fargo Theater, city leaders, the universities, people with the Community Arts Partnership, and really focusing on creating a broad swath. We looked at really what that draw is from about 120-minute drive time into the community, about 650,000-plus individuals. And what we found out is that we are a very young community. This isn't going to be any new information. We're a relatively affluent community, and we're also a highly educated community. And that really led to a lot of the information here, which is pretty amazing, which is with the Fargo MSA, we're at about a 98 spending potential index. I'm an architect, but I, based on what HVS told me, that means is that there's a high need and a high level of spending put towards the arts and towards performance-type facilities, no matter what they are. And that's extended out to the 120-minute drive radius to about 84. It drops as you go out a little bit, but... The other thing is, we want to be a good partner with the community. We know that there's other facilities from Theater B in the community, which is, well, at the time was a 72-seat facility, all the way up to the Fargo Dome at 19,000, 20,000-plus. We found that where the current Fargo Civic Center is at 3,000 seats, there was really a gap there, that the Civic Center filled to some degree. But between that 900 at the Festival Concert Hall up to Blue Stems being 3,000, there was really a gap in the community. We do acknowledge through HVS studies that there is a recent drop, or trending drop nationwide, in performing arts participation trends. But that's more focused on ballet, classical music, plays, opera, and other dance-type performances. And based on age and education, we did some studying on that. What we did find, though, is concert industry ticket sales have been raising, as well as touring theater ticket sales. So touring Broadway-type plays has been trending upward nationwide. A big piece of this, Commissioner Pepcorn, Commissioner Williams at the time, as well as some of us from the community, were involved in some tours. We went to Sioux Falls, looked at Washington Pavilion, which is on there, about a 1,900-seat facility. We went up to Centennial Concert Hall in Winnipeg, which was a 2,300-seat facility. And then really some of our peer, what we'd consider peer communities, Amarillo, Texas, Billings, Montana, up to Grand Forks at the Chester Fritz Auditorium, which is kind of undergoing a little bit of a makeover right now, Sioux City, Iowa, and some of these communities. And then broke down what each of those venues was programming in their space. What this showed is that with a little bit of a lower population in this group, we had a higher income and a lower age, and as I mentioned before, a higher education level, which led to that 98 art spending index, which far outpaced all the other peer communities. So then we got to jump in and have some fun as the architects, and what we came to is about a 2,000 to 2,400-seat venue, based on what we were finding, based on recommendations from HVS, with all of their work that they've been doing around the country. A staging capacity for touring theatrical shows, meaning a very large back-of-house area to bring in the sets and all the equipment that they would need. And we felt that the work being done on City Hall is actually very conducive to this because of the way that access is happening to the back-of-house for City Hall, we could utilize that space pretty effectively. Three levels of seating to maximize the intimacy of the theater, but also the ability, if we have a smaller venue, we can do a half-house show pretty effectively, which is something that a lot of promoters are looking for. And really making it multipurpose, making it work for many different entities, knowing that that main house is going to be focused on really the performing arts. And that led to that 116,000-square-foot program. And then we wanted to jump into the costs, working with one of our construction management partners, what the cost could look like for renovating these existing Civic Center. I'll get into a little bit of what that would entail here in a little bit, or demolishing the Civic Center and starting over, still creating that Civic Quad, which we're pretty excited about. And as you saw in that aerial footage, it's really going to be a game changer for that And as you saw in that aerial footage, it's really going to be a game changer for that Second Avenue View corridor and access to the river and the City Hall and everything else, which is demonstrated with the site plan. The option A on the left is repurposing of the Civic Center. Option B is the kind of starting from scratch with a demolished Civic Center. A very similar program space, we had to add on to the side, to the east side, as you see there, of the existing Civic Center. And we also wanted to integrate into the Skywalk level, which was critically important to access to City Hall. A little bit more of a workaround with the existing Civic Center, but would work very efficiently with a new rebuild, as well as what I was mentioning earlier with creating some elevated seating within the facility. So this is kind of the image that tells the most. As architects, we get excited about sectional images because it talks about what the building is and what it could be. So on the left, you see a section there of the existing Civic Center in the lighter blue. The darker blue is what we'd have to do to the building to make it actually function for a performing arts facility. So really, my structural engineer friends will think this is oversimplifying it, but popping the top off the building and rebuilding it above to allow for those fly area behind in the theater, and as well as to get the loge seating above. And you can see overlaid in that is that red outline. That's the, one of the theaters that Commissioner Pepcorn and the team walked through in Winnipeg, just to give a feeling for what that could look like. And then again, another transverse section showing a similar item. This adds a lot of cost to the project, and that's really where the Civic Center reuse became something that wasn't quite as feasible. The costs were comparable, but with the reuse, there was inferior circulation and loading in the back-of-house area, tough existing site organization to work around, but I think it was certainly workable with reusing the existing building. Fewer options for flexible seating, and we noted a higher risk to the owner, to the City of Fargo, because we just don't know as we start digging into the Civic Center what's in some of those areas in the building. So we identified that as a possible risk, which added cost and contingency to the project. And not as much architectural merit. We couldn't have as much opportunity to really make that a jewel that we think it could be, even though the Civic Center has certainly served a purpose.
Mr. Strand.
If I could just ask while you're on this topic.
Yep.
You're looking at an option A reuse, they were looking at it, and then an option B, build new. Was there an option explored where you build new and reuse the Civic Center for another purpose, or did we explore other community needs to see if there could be other fits for the existing structure? If you build new, then we see if that asset can be redeployed for community, greater public use?
Correct. It's a good question. There was not an option C at the time, the original. Actually, at the beginning of the project, there was only one option, which is let's just renovate the Civic Center.
It's something I'd be curious about.
Absolutely.
I'd be curious about the public and the community, what needs they have that could ever work, if ever that were considered as an option.
Yep, definitely.
Kind of answered that, John. The first part, they tried to see what the needs were, so that's well-defined in the project, just about the numbers of events, and they're trying to define size of it. So you could kind of take, apply part of that universally, is this what the community needs? Secondary question is, we're just trying to figure to repurpose the Civic Center or to tear it down. So that's where the two questions, I think, Mr. Pepcorn, that's what you had at the time. We didn't have any other space to move it to.
But the other thing, John, you have to be careful of. So then if you wanted to do that, then you would have to buy land for the other new facility. So then that would add a tremendous amount of cost on top of this, the land acquisition cost. So that's the main reason that we didn't do that at that time.
Correct. Good question. So option B was a new build, again, a cost of about 50-plus million dollars for that. More functional, we could have improved the site organization. It gave us a chance for flexible flat-floor seating options, which is something that Jade and some of them, Rob Sobelik from the Fargo Dome, identified as a good opportunity where you can pull back. It's pretty amazing technology. You can pull back the seating wagons at the front of a facility and have the ability to put tables and chairs and some of those things, new dinner theater, whatever you might have, or have some standing room seating for a concert at the front of house. Superior control of project costs with this option, a little bit more known, if you start with a, wouldn't be a true greenfield project, but it would be a little bit more known, as well as opportunity for significant architecture. So again, we found that there was demand, and we identified what those demand opportunities could be, really focusing primarily on concerts and theater. And then we got into creating a pro forma, primarily HVS, working with the team. This would be co-managed by the Fargo Dome. Well, they've managed their facility as well as managing this facility. In meeting with Rob just recently, he was saying that even assuming eight full-time staff, he felt was too much. He said that there could be a lot of opportunity for efficiency on his end for running both the Fargo Dome and this type of facility. And then obviously, the economic and fiscal impact of some, a project like this. And then I know that we talked pretty extensively about how other projects have been funded. Really, one of the things that we identified early in this process is the importance of private investment and excitement for the project. Obviously, the community partners being a piece of this, so it's not just something that the city takes on, but something that the community really gets behind. So working with Bruce, obviously, the implementation plan was at the last presentation of this two and a half years ago, was consensus on a recommendation for a new build at that time, knowing at the time that the downtown community, or the downtown master plan had not been finalized, which has now been completed. So the next steps would be to re-initiate the subcommittee, continue into design, and really the design focus would be more defined costs, as well as creating better imagery that can get the excitement built for some of those community partners to come in and hopefully bring some capital to the project, which would relate to that funding plan for developing that strategy for securing those corporate and private donations and sponsorships.
Thank you very much. Bruce, you want something to say?
I'd like to hear from the commission, obviously, but you do have a recommendation in my cover letter, and I spoke with Commissioner Grinberg before the meeting. He's got some thoughts as well. The point is, we think it's time to put together some sort of group now to move forward, both on a funding plan, private fundraising effort, as well as what architects call in the business the second phase is schematic design and much better cost estimating, so you know what it is you're trying to do with a funding plan. So thank you for your time.
Missionaries, questions? Mr. Grinberg, you have a...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I handed out a copy of a resolution. I'll come back to that in a moment, but I thought it might be helpful for me to just kind of explain my sequence of events, if you will, with this topic. Some of you have participated in the strategic efforts, strategic planning, visionary planning for the cities, the region, if you will, through the FM Chamber, Fueling the Future, it's called. And it's been a very comprehensive cross-cutting, diverse group that have been invited in to provide feedback about the future, whether that's increased emphasis on childcare, for example, or jobs and economic development. The sessions that I've sat in, there was a robust discussion on a performance center, as well as a convention center. And I wouldn't cast a wand and say that everybody feels this way, but there's a lot of comment at these sessions, and I've heard that we're very good at studying, we're not very good at executing in our community. And we don't need any more studies, were common quotes in some of these sessions. And so I, about a month ago, I guess, asked Bruce for an update on the performance center and wanted to study and read through the reports, which I did, and with a thought process of further the notion, if you will, of these two concepts, that had a little more tactical direction for them. And so when I saw the item on the agenda, where I was working with Downtown Business Association and others in the community to get a sense of what their thoughts were, when I saw it on the agenda, I drafted this resolution over the weekend. And I'd like to, I'd like to read through that and explain the thoughts as I've read the study, but more so be a little more definitive at the City Commission level with some specifics, rather than just another committee, because I think the public and those at support are passionate about a performance center, as well as a convention center, that's probably a later discussion, that there's some definition that comes out of this, rather than just another study. And so that's the background and the rationale I'm using for what I've handed out here this evening. And so, and again, I'm not hung up on numbers, I'm not hung up on timelines per se, but let me just run through this. And my intention was to read this tonight because it was added on the agenda, and ask for public comment and commission comment, and then make a motion two weeks from now that has some clear direction behind it. And so I recognize in the first whereas, the August 2015 study that's been alluded to here this evening, that the Board of City Commissioners deems it appropriate, desirable, to develop a performance center for the betterment of our region, that the Board of City Commissioners encourages related community organizations, some of which were presented here tonight on a slide deck, including arts and theater organizations, as well as tri-college university, to support the performance center with programming and operational costs to enhance the mission of the center. It's a pretty direct message or whereas, but one of the breakout sessions about this concept was that if this is going to be successful, our university system has to be supportive of this as well. So that's some of the rationale and the reason it's draft, to get more feedback on this as we move forward. Board of City Commissioners, whereas, will establish a committee of 10 comprised of seven business and community leaders and three city leaders. That could be Mr. Grubb, that could be two of us as commissioners, could be the mayor and a commissioner. Committee's responsibilities are review the feasibility study, determine the revised construction budget, oversee private sector fundraising, identify local partners for programming, and recommend preferred location for the project. Whereas, the Board of City Commissioners requires that financing of this project is to be structured as a public-private partnership, with no less than 50% of the project costs are to be derived from non-public funds. Public funding options for the performance center will be explored and are contingent on private investment commitments from the city, future city commission action. Second to the last, whereas, the Board of City Commissioners established the following timeline as goals for the performance center project. Establish a 10-member committee by April 9, 2018, define the project budget and location by September 1, 2018, private investment campaign to begin on October 1, 2018, and completed by September 1, 2019. Final project financing completed by April 2020, and a groundbreaking for the center May 2, I'm sorry, May 2020. Whereas, the City Commissioners commits $50,000 in the 2018 budget for seed expenses for fundraising to launch this private sector campaign, and another $50,000 will be budgeted in 2019 for campaign-related expenses, and that presumption is the additional fundraising costs will be secured by organizations other than the City of Fargo. I would imagine a campaign of this nature would be a couple hundred thousand dollars if you hired a full-time professional fundraiser. And so that's the nature of the resolution that I felt, given what I've heard in the community about these two projects, that we need a little more definition in where we're going as a city, to put a little more meat on the bones, if I could use that analogy. And so more studies, I think some are going to just raise their eyebrow, in my opinion, Mr. Mayor. You know, we'll be here a year from now talking about another study again. And so my intent is to empower the private sector, us oversee as city commission, not get in the details of it, but set it in motion.
Just a comment, Mr. Pepcorn.
Well, I guess I'm much more in favor of the recommended motion. I appreciate Commissioner Grinberg's recent involvement in it, but we've had, we had a really good group, a working committee. I thought we did a great job. I think we should reinstitute the committee that we had. I think injecting the university system, business leaders, would be a huge mistake. I don't see a lot of success with a lot of the things that they've become involved with. We have a good plan, and so I would, I would like to, I'll just read the recommended motion that I'd like to read, since he went through his whole whereases. My recommended motion will be to approve the formation of a new subcommittee, similar to that which was assembled to complete the feasibility study. The new subcommittee will establish a plan of next steps in the process to include the completion of a preliminary design and cost estimate, as well as a planned financing. It is anticipated that the plan of financing would consider private-public partnership and include a plan for a private fundraising campaign. That's it. I like simple. I don't like getting more and more legislative gobbledygook. I like it simple. We are on the edge of doing something good. Talking about the convention center, that'll kill it. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
That's your motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Bishop Garrick.
I guess I'll just point out the obvious. Would it be great to have a performing arts center? Yep. It'd be great to have that, $55 million and $20,150. So it's more like 60 now. We just built a City Hall. That was overpriced. We just did a $100 million expansion to the water plant. We needed that. We're going to do a $100 million expansion of the sewer plant. We need roads and gutters and all the things that you pay for. Your taxes are going up. How are we going to pay for this? Your taxes will go up again. So there are needs in the city that are gigantic. We're going to get a new cost estimate for the diversion. That's going to go up. And we're talking about all these wants. And I think it's misguided, and I think it's dangerous to go this far into debt for things you don't need. So I hope the people of Fargo pay attention. You know, we want convention centers and parking ramps at the airport, and we have things that we actually need. So I will not support it. We studied it. It didn't go anywhere, for good reason. But I'm sure this will be an issue for a long time, but I hope people are paying attention.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you. And I'd like to address Commissioner Grinberg. I really appreciate the thought processes you put before us, and my thinking is that none of your suggestions wouldn't be included in our path forward. I'm sincere about that. I think the public-private partnership is key to whether we can do something like this. And I'm all for exploring the topic again with, we have new commissioners. We'll have new commissioners next year, perhaps two, so we don't know. We just never know, but...
Perhaps zero.
You never know. And so I'm for exploring it. I believe the community wants us to create an action plan. That's my sense. I think that arts and culture, and I'd like us all to include the Arts and Culture Commission now that's in existence in this discussion as well. But so I'm for going forward, for the timelines that Commissioner Grinberg laid out. If we can adhere to them, all the better. If we can adhere to your recommendations, all the better. I'm sure we'll all have suggestions about who should be on this commission, and I'm not sure if it's clear who will appoint them. Is it the mayor or would it be the...
I think it's a similar file as they had previously.
And were those mayoral appointments?
It was two commissioners, co-chairs Dave Pepcorn and Mike Williams at that time. Two city staff was Bruce Grubb and Bob Getz. Two Fargo Dome authority members, there was a member in Bob Sobelik, one civic authority member, and then one local events promoter.
And the mayor will appoint them in the end?
Mr. Chairman, so all we're doing, we're not approving anything. Now we're just going to go back and refine the numbers and get a little sharper pen as to what will this building actually cost? That's the first thing. And the other thing, when Tony talked about, this can't lose money. It has to break even or make money, or I won't support it. That's a key thing. But Tony, we have to have vision. We're city leaders. We want this to be a better place, and this isn't just going to happen by cutting taxes. But I will promise you this, we aren't going to be increasing anybody's taxes or anything like that. But this is, this is a huge change for the downtown. It will be a huge economic driver. It will benefit, it will create jobs, it'll create new businesses. And so this is it. This is a great opportunity, so I hope we don't squander it. Thank you.
So just a comment, a couple of your comments, Commissioner Grinberg. I do like your idea, let's get a plan, let's go forward. In 2015, we're having trouble getting a City Hall built, so we worked our way through that and finally got a City Hall built. The city did not feel at that time we should put a lot of our energies to a convention center or to a performing arts center at that time, just because of money and constraints. Now is the time to relook at that, and Commissioner Garrick actually had asked this, is we should have public money as well as private money into the performing arts. And I like your suggestion of a 50-50, and we've talked about that, but we don't know how to raise money in the private sector without a professional help, so that's the idea behind that. It would seem when you review this, there is an edge for a 2,500 facility that can take people in, and we can compete nationally as a city for a lot of things that go on in the city. The reason the convention center has looked a little bit of sconce is that's even an additional 50 million to 100 million, and what I've asked the chamber to do is figure out a way to finance it. I'm happy to look at that, and you can look at wherever you want to put it, but a convention center is going to rob from the Fargo Dome. We can easily probably do some of the things with the Fargo Dome addition, about 20 to 40 million, and get a variety of venues there that we can have. But for Charlie Johnson, if I'm going to chase eight or 10 menus into our community at what cost versus doing a performing arts center where I'm going to have 100 to 150 venues in our area, it seems to me my money is better spent there rather than trying to take from the Fargo Dome. If we take many of the events that are happening at the Fargo Dome and move them to the convention center, our Fargo Dome, which is profitable right now, may become unprofitable. So we can take a bigger look at the convention center, but I think we have to figure out, in either element, we have to figure out the finances. And to put meat on the bone, this does put meat on the bone. How are you going to finance it and what are you going How are you going to finance it, and what are you going to do? And Commissioner Peppcorn said also, we don't want increased taxes to do that, so is there a different way of financing it? And I think Bruce Grubbs got some financial people that we would look at this a different way. Maybe you do a tax increment district downtown. Maybe you do something that supports it, since the downtown people will benefit from people coming and eating and drinking and doing different things before an event. So I would say, I concur, I think we should look at some of what Commissioner Grinberg has suggested as timelines, because you have some aggressive timeline that looks really good, and we could decide whether or not we're going to do anything. And we also could move forward on what I call valued engineering. Maybe it doesn't cost 55 million. Maybe we can get a different price on it. So I would support the motion and would like us to move forward.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote no for principle. I think we're half-baked in our approach here. We're all interested in this project, but I think from a standpoint of the public and those that are very interested in this, we should have a little more direction and clarity what we're going to do. And so I'm not against the performance center, nor am I against the convention center, but the legislative process works, and public input should be something we should listen to over two weeks before we make any motion on this, in my opinion. So I'll be voting no on principle.
Mr. Chairman, we've done lots of studies. We've met with all the different...can I talk?
Sure.
Thank you. We've done research, and this is just the next step. We're not taking action on building the building in two weeks. This is just starting the committee up and starting to get more numbers again. That's all we're doing. So I'm in favor of it.
Right, to your point, like blue stamp, same size, so, and we own that, so that it'll take from there as well. So we're going to compete in the private sector and in the public sector, which isn't going to help anybody. It just moves money around from one part of the city to the other, or from a private area to a public area, or whatever else. None of these convention, none of these performing arts centers that we're shown here make any money. They all lose money. And ours is going to lose $140,000 a year. That's a razor-thin edge. You have one event that gets canceled by snow, now it's $300,000. You get two, it could be a million. You have no idea. So we're expecting a small loss. Well, that's rose-colored glasses for that. A TIF district to pay for it. That means we're going to draw a big circle around this area, and every tax star that gets paid for property taxes doesn't go to schools, it doesn't go to the parks, doesn't go to, you know, the airport or anywhere else. It goes right to that thing to pay for that thing. That's what a TIF district is. Okay? So when they say, well, we'll just do a TIF district, they'll be easy. Tell the schools it'll be easy, okay? Tell those guys it's going to be revenue out of their pockets for that. So taxes will go up one way or another, or they'll be diminished in another way because of that.
Mr. Chairman, there isn't going to be a TIF district, and I just said, we're not going to raise taxes. So that's what I just said.
Well, you called it a feasibility study, so I think we would look at all feasibilities on that study. So I think that's the point of the motion. Any other discussion?
And Mayor...
Mr. Strand?
And that's where I'm at. I want information that's current and contemporary, and I believe the spirit of most of us here is to support exploring this. And I believe, I think we, I support Commissioner Grinberg's practical approaches too, to build into this process with our committee as we go, if we get there. I just want to know what it would look like. I want to know what it would feel like. I want to know what the people of the city would think of it. I want to know how it would impact our ability to recruit people here to come and work in Fargo and live in Fargo, to, you know, to, what it would do for our quality of life. That's what I want to know. And I want to know if there's buy-in from the public, you know? I don't know any of that right now. I have my gut sense of these things, but...so I'm entirely supportive of this, to get the ball rolling, to get our arms around what it would look like, what it would take, how it could be done, and then we do one step at a time going forward.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Grinberg?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. We'll take a 15-minute break, or 10-minute break, and then finish up. Call the meeting back to order. So we are...
retrofit?
retrofit the Civic Center, which HVAC equipment. Bruce Grubbs at the podium again. You're getting like Steve Spring.
Yes, thank you. This item is related to the heating and cooling equipment in the Civic Center. Old City Hall and the Civic Center currently share HVAC equipment. The heating equipment that serves both buildings is in the Civic Center. The cooling equipment that serves both buildings is in Old City Hall. Buildings and grounds has informed me that the boiler system, the heating portion in the Civic Center, is in need of replacing, and they're having trouble getting it serviced any longer. The reason that they've been kicking that can down the road is our last discussion about three or four years ago, we talked about a possible repurposing of the Civic Center. So, but now they've said it's time, as long as we need, to retrofit the HVAC stuff, because Old City Hall will come down, and to maintain cooling here, we need to replace that cooling equipment that serve both buildings. So that's what we'd like to move forward on. The unfortunate part is, it's not cheap. This stuff never is. It's about $700,000. We have utilized Obermiller Nelson Engineering to do this work for us, because they were the mechanical engineers on the new city hall project and the old city hall demolition project. And so we'd like to sole source with them, because they understand the interrelationship and the HVAC systems between the two buildings. So what we're asking for tonight is approval to proceed with that sole source, so we can go out for bid and get that equipment designed, bid installed prior to the demolition of Old City Hall. And so in looking at how do you pay for this, I sat down last week with Kent Costin a little bit, and he suggested a technique that we've used in the past, which involved an interdepartmental type of loan. We used that several years ago, a water utility fund loan for the NRI program that was then paid back to the water utility. And then even going back to as far back as Newman Outdoor Field, I think it was either a general fund loan, or it might even have been a solid waste utility loan at that time, and paid back with interest such that the loan and those funds were better off because of the interest gained as well. So that's the recommendation.
Your motion?
I'll make the motion. Can I ask a question real quick, too? So Bruce, if something happened, is this movable? If there's improvements?
Thank you for that. Not 100% of it, but the new boiler equipment and the new chiller equipment can be removed and reinstalled in a new building. And so that's what would happen if, at some point in the future, Civic Center would come down and something new would go up, we'd certainly make sure to preserve that equipment and reuse it again.
Is there a second?
No, I have a question, if I could. You can go for a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Go ahead, Bishop Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just torn of throwing this kind of money into a building where in the breath before it talked about maybe demolishing. And this is a dilemma I'm trying to work through.
That is an interesting situation we're in, and you're absolutely correct. However, the Civic may stand for another 50 years, and we've got events that we're currently booking in the Civic this summer, for example, with drone focus back again. Last year, we had the National Secretary of Transportation in town, already booking for 2019. So Buildings and Grounds said, hey, look, we should have replaced those boilers years ago, but now that you're talking about doing some retro work, you really got to replace the boilers. So I understand the conflicting situation you're in, Commissioner.
And I just don't know if there's a way around that, but if we're talking a $50 million facility, if that happened, and half of it's public and half, this is 1/25th of the cost of that whole new project. Not quite, but it's, you know, 1/20th, and...
Well, the, it sounds like a weak argument, but it's an argument. It will save the heating and cooling equipment that was part of that $50 million. You would be pre-buying it right now.
Bishop Strand, I don't think we have much of a choice. If they tear down Old City Hall, we have no heating and cooling for this area, and we'd probably still use this area plus Civic Center, so it's unfortunate, but unless you decide you want to build and do something right away. I mean, just time-wise, there's no way of getting around it.
Are these events, could they be relocated for the moment and cut our costs and wait till we know what our future would be for the center?
Once they divide the building, we don't have any choice.
So we just, okay...
Once you take down Old City Hall...
There's a funny thing that I've learned is the location downtown is really popular for all of these events. There's something about the downtown vibe.
But Bruce, just speak to, can we do it when we tear down City Hall? Do we have any choices on the heating and cooling of this building and the Civic Center?
Well, if we want to maintain heating and cooling, which I would recommend, we need to install those new pieces of equipment, as you see here. And then in the event that this, if the Civic Center lives on forever, good investment. If it comes down, we remove that equipment that can be reinstalled. You don't cover everything, but about half a million dollars worth of that's able to be removed and reinstalled.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
No.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 39, request for lease purchase Border States Electric IT Building at 2403 Third Avenue. Bruce Grubbs...
Yes, thank you. This is an interesting one. As of mid-2017, we've been leasing the warehouse space of the Border States Electric Building out on First Avenue North and 25th Street. As you know, it was recently, the warehouse space was recently fit up for our Police Department Field Services Division. The Chief Todd has reported to me that that has really had a positive impact, as you might expect, on morale with that division of our PD. Border States actually leases that building from an ownership group called Red River Properties, and so technically, we are subleasing the warehouse space from Border States Electric. We were interested in attempting to purchase the building in 2019 when their lease agreement expires, in negotiating with the actual building owner, Paul Madsen. He indicated that they really, the ownership group wanted to keep that as an investment. The reason that they had that as a leasable space is so it would be revenue-producing, and they wanted to do that for another 10 years. Through negotiations, we were able to get him to reduce that to a five-year lease period, and then we'd have the option to purchase that building. As you just heard tonight already, Border States is in the process of constructing a new corporate headquarters in South Fargo. They anticipate, as you also heard from Tammy Miller, occupying that building in early 2019, somewhere in the first quarter. And after they've vacated that building, of course, administrations and investigations is really anxious to get out there, too. That's a little update on the corporate headquarters, but that really isn't what's on your agenda in front of you tonight. Border States also owns another building north of the corporate headquarters, right across the street. It's immediately west of our central garage building. The mayor, Commissioner Peppcorn, Chief Todd, and I actually toured both of these buildings, the corporate headquarters and their north building, their IT building, about three years ago. At the time, we remarked that, boy, due to the proximity here, and you look at the layout, there's office space, there's meeting room space, there's training room space, there's even garage warehouse space. So we thought, boy, we should see if we can preserve an option to potentially acquire that at some point in the future. That was included in the sublease agreement. Problem is, the deadline to exercise that option is March 1st, and so that's why that's in front of you tonight. Since we originally viewed the building, 18,500 square feet, looked at some possibilities that we might have, had departmental tours of the building. Very interested is Red River Dispatch, interested in relocating from their downtown location due to security issues. Solid Waste Utility, their building, at some point in the future, we have seen a need to upgrade or replace that. They've walked through and thought it had a really good application for them. Our Water Meters Division, we currently lease space in South Fargo. We'd like to be able to get out of that lease agreement. This would be a really good location. It's proximity to Central Garage for them as well. And then public safety, some of the groups out at the public safety building would also be interested in relocating here as well. So I had Ben Hushka, our city assessor, figure out what the assessed value of the land and buildings were there. In addition to the IT building, there are a couple of outbuildings and quite a bit of additional surface parking areas associated with this as well. Ben's assessed value right now is about $1,500,000. Of course, one of the things that we would do is have the building and land appraised, and then we'd base our negotiations off whatever a formal appraisal says. So the big question is, we've talked about it a lot tonight, how do you afford something like this? And I just threw some possible thoughts in my cover letter. I mean, early 2019, when PD vacates the police station headquarters, the corner of Fourth Street and Third Avenue, that land is potentially available for redevelopment if we would choose to go that route. Right across the street to the north is the old Public Health Building. It'll essentially be vacated once we move into new City Hall. Both of those buildings, Ben indicate to have an assessed value of $1,700,000 on them today. We've got other opportunities, the Mid-America Steel Site, we haven't really decided what we want to do with that. That may be city use, that could be made available for redevelopment as well, and other potential property acquisitions through flood buyouts. So I took this to the Finance Committee two weeks ago, and with the recommendation that we'd be allowed to exercise this option at that time. That's the recommendation in front of you tonight, and be happy to answer questions.
Question of the Commissioner, Bishop Strand?
I moved the recommended motion.
Moved to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Grinberg?
Bruce, can you just comment on any implications on the 2018 budget? I'm just off the top of my head trying to recall the last few meetings in this 2018. Are we, are there a capital budget or operating? Have we made decisions here that affect our budget one way or the other?
Yeah, this would be a 19 budget issue, and one of the things that Kent Costin talked to me about is with the central fire station, for example, and the Public Health Building south 25th Street. In those cases, he utilized debt financing for the purchase, and then we budgeted an annual capital budgeting, the debt service there, that he seemed to think worked quite well in the past and would work here as well.
Again, you gave me a three-page sheet on 2018 projects and by category across the city, and to some of Commissioner Garrick's point, we don't serve on the Finance Committee, so we come here, we're kind of blind...
Sure.
...what's going on, and we act on certain things, and we don't ever see the budget implications in a spreadsheet format, for example, in the attachments. And so it's just a comment, I'm going to support it, but at times, it kind of, we're kind of secondary when it comes to these decisions, because we're not in the loop on the finance decisions. And I get why. I'm just saying that from a communication standpoint...
And I would say probably in the future, Commissioner, we'll try to get that data for you, because it would be helpful. I know we always ask about the 18th on the finance. We went back to that, and we feel we can afford it this time. The other thing on the FEMA exercise that we had, they felt pretty strong about the dispatch center has to be in a secure area, and there's some things we may have to do in regards to that, just looking forward to the world and the way it is, is that we may need a special type of buildup for the dispatch center and have a very secure place for that. And it really looks like there's a lot of moving parts that can utilize this space, so it's one of those opportunities that comes up. We do make adjustments, and then going to the 19th, it will be reflected appropriately. Bishop Garrick?
Just for clarity for me, are we moving to the lease option or the purchase option, or are we leasing for five years and then buying after five?
No, we would be pursuing the purchase option for the north building that Border States owns. They have offered us, they have offered us the option to lease with an option to purchase in the future if that works better fiscally for us, but either way, I think that we would But either way, I, I think that we would work out a debt financing plan.
But we can lease now, is what you're saying. We can lease this building for.
Yes.
Exponent years.
Correct.
My concern is if we buy it, we're removing taxable square footage. You know, it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to rent it, but what's the tax revenue that we get off of that?
That's a good question.
So I would, I mean, I'm fine with moving forward. I just think we should do what makes the most dollars and cents in that regard.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that you're negotiating a lease purchase upfront. It's not just a lease, and then a few years later down the road, we try to put cobble together a purchase. I'm glad, I respect that it's being upfront, and you have parameters laid out to define what the purchase would be. I think that's important. Thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item number nine, a six-month extension of a Class A alcoholic beverage license for Firebox. I think Steve Sprague did explain, but I think Commissioner Pepcorn pulled this one?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Steve, while you're coming up, I'll just kind of give you my, the reason that I pulled it. So they're trying to sell their liquor license, they're having a little bit of difficulty. And so the concept I want to throw out to you is, we should consider buying back this license. What we did was made a change a few years ago, that now licenses are not your property. And so what we would do is buy it back as a city, and then we could reissue it. This is just, and this is just a concept, but then it would no longer be an asset of the people buying the license. So, and maybe Joe, I don't know if you, I don't want to put you on the spot, but maybe you want to talk about that, but our liquor licenses, we need to make some changes, and this would be a gradual way.
What would your value be of that? Would it be a hundred and five?
That's, that's the debate, what the, what the value is. But it's just something to consider, and I think in the future, we're going to need to do this, and I just thought this would be a gradual way to begin doing that. And so that's just my, go ahead, Steve, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to bump you, but you've been up so much today, but, but that's my concept. Can you just tell me what you think of that?
Well, that'd be, it's an interesting, interesting scenario that you've put out there. Certainly, it would take one license out of the free market circulation, and, and we could then reissue that license at the city's issuance rate rather than the free market rate. And then if that business were to ever go out of business in the future, it would revert back to the city. That's, that's what you're referring to.
Right.
That was a change made in two thousand fourteen. Any new licenses issued would, are not transferable unless it's selling the, the business as a going concern.
Mr. Garrick.
I need clarity, I guess. Once, let's just say, for example, this A license was sold, can they turn around and sell it again to somebody else?
Anything that's originally, so it's, anything that was originally sold or issued prior to that two thousand fourteen, so.
I thought that once it was sold again, it would, then now all bets are off, and it's going to be going back to the city.
That's not the way that I understand. I think Eric is.
I think you're correct.
Yeah. So it, so it does become a bit of a tracking issue, too, you know, trying to go back to when that license was first issued. And it will take a long time to.
So this person wants a six-month extension so they can sell it. Is that correct?
That's correct. The background on this, the person that has the license was able to secure the license from Olive Garden, and they had the intention originally to open a bar in downtown Fargo. They changed their mind, didn't want to get into the bar business, and have been actively seeking, you know, selling the license since then. They've had a couple of deals that have fallen through. These can sometimes be complex.
Why was the reason we had not enough Z license? Why wouldn't they have just bought that license, and then they could come downtown?
That was the guy who was trying to get the Z license.
Oh, okay. That gentleman is trying to. And what's the value of this license at this present point?
Well, we don't get into the free market, so we don't know for sure.
But I mean, if the city decided to buy it, would be the.
If the city had this license, it's an A license, we would have it on our books at a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Okay. So, and does it just come back to us if they don't find a buyer?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for bringing this up when it's been a long night already, and it's a hypothetical thing, but I just wanted us to get the wheels turning to think about it, because it's a way to gradually change over our system.
Good evening, Joe Burgum. I live at five fourteen Tenth Avenue South. I'm a citizen here in Fargo, and I guess you consider me a Fargo Liquor Control subject matter expert at this point. So yes, to the, the point of Steve and Attorney Eric Johnson, this is an old-school license, a grandfathered license, and so it sits on the free market. It's a sellable commodity, and was kind of determined as so, kind of in a roundabout way, many years ago, when a lawsuit was settled and a value was determined on the license in a divorce settlement, that the value is worth more than what the city was selling it for. I want to speak here tonight at a global level, and not about the instance of the Class A license that's being discussed for Firebox, but in the context of an overhaul of the liquor license, and this challenge we have with the licenses being a commodity, and then reconciling the existing licenses that are no longer a commodity. Saint Paul in the late nineties had a similar problem, where bar owners had their licenses held on their balance sheet, and were challenging the city on changing it, because today I can sell this license. And so what Saint Paul did in order to conduct a total overhaul of the license was they did an optional buyback. They offered to buy back the licenses at a determined value that was set by the commission on a sunset. And so the day they started the buyback, it was worth a hundred percent of what the city offered, and at the end of the buyback period, which I believe was eighteen months, it was worth zero. The thing that's interesting about a liquor license is it's a going concern. You need a liquor license to run your business. If you're to sell your liquor license, you no longer run your establishment. And so there are some dynamics in which Saint Paul conducted their buyback, and none of the operating bars opted to sell their license back, because they were offered the option to be grandfathered in. They needed the license to run their business. In the case of a license that's sitting on the market, someone may choose to buy it back. But I think in terms of the conversation, the conversation we had this last week at Liquor Control, how do we move forward with a system that solves the problems differently or is more straightforward, as expensive as it may be, or as much of a process as it may be? I think the cleanest way would be to offer a global buyback that would then allow the city to rewrite the policy as it relates to liquor control. So that's merely my perspective as a citizen who spent a lot of time reading on this, and would be offered to continue the discussion as it relates to the policy and the economics.
Hello, my name is Doug Murch with the Economy of SE Law Firm here in town, the person who requested the, the extension. So if anyone has any questions, Commissioner Pepcorn did approach me after the last Liquor Control Board meeting. I think what I said is, I guess it depends on, on what the buyback is. So I don't know if I'm really in a position to discuss the broader policy implications or whatnot, but if anyone has any questions about my extension request, be happy to answer those.
But your client's having a difficult time selling the license, so if the city offered you a hundred and fifteen thousand.
I'd have to talk to a client about.
Because the other option is we don't do an extension, and then it's worth zero.
No, understood, and that's why we're here, you know, requesting the extension. This is something that's just come up. I don't know if there's a buyback number that's necessarily been discussed. We do have people who have approached me about it. I have some meetings coming up about that. So we are hoping that we'll be able to make some progress on that and get the, the license moved here in the near future. Just coming out of Liquor Control Board meeting last week, there was some people that came up to me afterwards and talked to me about it. So we're hoping that we will be able to find a buyer for.
And is the value higher than one fifteen?
It is.
Thank you. Mr. Garrick.
Just for clarity, item thirty-five A, or excuse me, B, is that license, correct? That's like.
Thirty.
That they own?
The continued.
The continued one?
No.
That's not yours?
No, no. That.
Gotcha.
That was the license that was discussed for the move downtown. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Strand, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just curious about if. We don't have a policy right now that allows what you're advancing as a topic, an idea, where we can, as a city.
Correct.
Buyback. We don't, it's a, it's a thought, but we don't have a policy in place, and, and yet lately, we're just spinning about these liquor control issues all over the board. And, and yet I, my view is, I don't want to hamper and put a harm or contribute to harm or a challenge that a private business has. I'm okay letting them extend it if they can sell it themselves. We don't have an option yet to buy it back from them in the global view that Joe Burgum talks about. You know, we, we need that policies, those policies addressed and in place. So in the meantime, I'm just, I'm okay with giving them the six months, hope they pull out of their tailspin and keep reinvesting in the community.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, John, no, this was never my intention, to just say, hey, we're gonna, we're not going to extend it, and we'll, we'll give you a bottom dollar. So that was never my intention. I just wanted, this is a hybrid concept, and I just wanted, Tony and I are on the, on the liquor control, and as you know, that's been, there's a lot of this percolating. So I just wanted you to, it's just a concept, and a hybrid concept, and I never made any offer or anything like that. We just, we just were visiting, and so, but I do think it's an issue, and it, and it's just one way to, to, to solve it. So, but I was never, I would never propose, I didn't pull this to say, yeah, we're gonna, I'm not in favor of not, and matter of fact, I'll make the motion to extend.
Second.
So it begs the question of one of the things we continue to talk about, Commissioner Garrick talked about having a consultant come in and look at this. We continually are having more and more problems with liquor licenses and how we give them out. At one time, the city did consider buying all the licenses back, similar to the dialogue that Joe talked about, as you set a price, you buy them back, and then it goes down over time. And then the city does licenses similar to West Fargo, in which you can put out licenses and have quite a few establishments that have the license. I still beg the question, we may want to really look at that, because we, we're going to get these kind of special deals almost. It almost feels like we're trying to do special events, special deal things. We don't want a bar here, but we want a bar there, we want to do this, we want to do that. So it almost seems to me that Liquor Control should really take that up in earnest and maybe consider that consultant idea, Tony, to see what other institute, what other cities do, and is there a way not making it a cash cow? Because right now, it's a cash cow. It's, it's got a certain value, it's well over one eighteen, one fifteen, I'm sure. And we have people fighting for that license right now. But to establish a business with an upfront cost of over two hundred thousand, it's really tough, tough day, deal to do for many businesses, so.
And that will be on the agenda. I'll, I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Any other discussion? The notion is to extend the license six months. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Last item, I think, right?
Yep.
Installation dedicated bike lanes along Fourth Street South, Twelfth Avenue to Second Streets South, Improvement District BR one eighteen, or eighteen G one. Jeremy Gordon to explain, and I think Commissioner Garrick pulled this one.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Just give you a brief intro into this, and then we can get any, any questions that you have. So as part of the capital improvement plan this year, we plan on totally reconstructing Fourth Street from where we ended last year, at the YMCA driveway, down to about Twelfth Avenue South, just north of the water plant. So staff is currently, it's under design, and we plan to bid it out in the next month or two and complete the project this summer. So I'll just give you a quick slideshow on what, we had a public meeting earlier this month. We sent out invitations to folks between the river and Eighth Street, down to the water plant. We had good attendance. Like I said, it's on, on the list. This project's full redo, it's an old area, old infrastructure. Replace the pavement, water main, repair the storm and sewer where necessary, or fully replace it. Replace the sidewalks, new traffic signal, new streetlights, and we're looking at the possibility of burying the overhead lines that are on the east side of the road. So this was for the public information meeting. But you guys did approve a design in two thousand sixteen, an alternative in two thousand sixteen, that said, just remove and replace what's there, no bike lanes. Install the bike lanes from the YMCA north up to basically the old Sanford Hospital, but nothing south of the YMCA driveway. That's where folks can get into the park and do their biking in there. So we do, staff does have a different idea on that. Staff believes that there should be on-street bike lanes, but we wanted to gather the public input from the folks that were there. So I believe there was right around forty people that attended the meeting. We gave them three options, leave it as is, just remove and replace, and get on with their life. Option two would be add bike lanes and remove parking, or option three, hybrid of the first two, put bike lanes down to Seventh Avenue, and then utilize Seventh Avenue over to Fifth Street by Hawthorne School, and use that as the bike route heading south. One item of note is, the road is thirty-four feet wide today, and we wouldn't plan on making it any wider than it is today with any of these options. So here's the area that you can see. It's a pretty long project. So option one, that's remove and replace what you see. Two driving lanes, one parking lane on the west side. Option two, same footprint, we just move the striping and add more striping. Thirty-four foot wide. So this, I did a little Google search today, this is the closest I could find of buffered bike lane. It would be like what we have in Tenth and University, but imagine two-way street and a bike facility on the other side. It wouldn't be as spacious as this, but it, this is very close to what it would be like. Then option three would do that down to Seventh Avenue, and then allow parking south of Seventh Avenue. So one item of note is, we did get grant funding, so the, the ballfield there in Dill Hill Park, right here, we are connecting, we are building a shared-use path this summer just in this one-block stretch to tie the park into the neighborhood, because that's a very well-beaten mud path that people use and have used over the years. So with that, I believe that's pretty much all I have for you. I can answer any questions.
I think Joe Burgum had a neighborhood study as well.
Yeah, that was in your packet.
And they suggested option two?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, it's been a long meeting, talking about liquor and performing arts, and I'm just a lowly engineer designing streets. So in the meeting, there was, majority of the people wanted option two. It was close, I think it was thirteen, twelve, and then the hybrid option didn't have too many votes. And Joe, the techie that he is, he sent out a survey to his neighborhood association, and I think this is in your packet. So forty-four percent of those respondents liked option two, and the other two options were split equally at what, twenty-eight percent. So it is, I am, believe me, believe me, I am surprised that folks were in favor of option two. I'm usually going against the grain with these bike lane options. So I can answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? So one of the options, they lose parking, is that correct? Can you show the, show it again?
Yeah, and I can explain that a little bit further, too. So in this area, you know, it's all avenues, and there's only Fourth and Fifth Street. So the folks that do need to park on the street on the winter restriction months, from November until the middle of April, you know, they can't, they can't park on the street four nights of the week. So they got to park on the street those nights that the avenues aren't available. So, but, and that's how our winter parking ordinance reads. So Ben and I have been talking, this area, we would want to change that ordinance so that you could park on the avenue seven nights a week, just put it on one side or the other, depending upon the day. Or like by our apartments, we usually have Friday routes, so you have to park on one side of the street six days and the other side on the seventh. So that's, you, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. Now, this isn't a highly utilized parking area, but it is used in the winter.
Mr. Garrick, you brought this up, do you want to comment?
I'm just going to vote no.
Oh, you want to explain?
I don't think it's required. I think it could be used less than the university ones, that don't get used hardly at all.
Mr. Eric, Jeremy, one of the comments made by somebody is that just have them ride on the sidewalk. What's the difference between riding on the sidewalk and doing traffic bike lanes?
Well, riding on the sidewalk's actually the most dangerous place to ride your bike. And I believe in, I've done it on this stretch. The sidewalk's in really poor shape, but if it was in good shape, you're a second-class citizen on a bicycle on the sidewalk, because nobody's looking out for you, you're looking out for everybody. So that's, I mean, that's an option, but it's not, it's, it's the most dangerous option.
Most of our accidents happen on sidewalks?
Yeah, at, at intersections. Or driveways.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, Jeremy, has this been run through the MetroCog Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, and what's their recommendation?
Yeah, so the MetroCog two thousand sixteen Ped and Bike Plan, note of, note of, you know, they, they do a gap analysis in our system. In this mile stretch, came up as a gap in our transportation plan. So this was one of the top gaps that people would like to see filled. So last summer, we reconstructed north of the Y up to Main.[1746.41] filled. So, last summer, we reconstructed north of the Y up to Main. When we do Main, we're gonna, we're gonna continue the bike lanes up across the railroad tracks, and then there is existing bike street, bike lane marking out on Fourth by the library now, going north. And then, at the water plant, we have the Sherrills that are on Fifth Street that go south to the, to the Country Club and then out over University. So, this is one of the missing final links to our north-south bike.
And I'll just add a comment here. I'm routinely with MetroCog folks and others advancing the concept of 24/7 bike access, and, and I'm concerned, like you talk about that project by the dud ball diamonds and that, going into a park, well, we're, we're putting in infra, not this, but we're putting infrastructure into a bike path, into a space that's closed off at dusk. And, and, you know, so you can't even bike there, some of these bike paths that are through the parks and along the rivers, and so this at least is public access, 24/7. It's not just once in a while, when the, you know, when it's open for daylight, and I, I appreciate that part of this at least. I'm glad you're working with MetroCog.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, these bike paths are unavailable six months out of the year. Go look, go find a bike path for me right now, a bike lane. There aren't any. It's winter in North Dakota.
We have some winter riders.
The Big Wheels?
Big Wheels. Any other discussion?
Vote for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Garrick?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Any other business in this commission? Can I have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank.